All right. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the last day of November of 2022. We are here for the Marion County Board of Commissioners Weekly Board Session. It's Wednesday, November 30th, 2022. It's 9:00 a.m. and we're in the Senator Hearing Room at 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. And if you would, please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think you all should have to come every week. So we're not just saying this ourselves. It's lovely to see all these folks in the audience. So just remember, we're here on Wednesdays at 9:00. All right, we're going to start with public comment. And we have a few people signed up. I saw a couple of folks come in the door. So if you are here for public comment and want to speak, make sure you let Brenda know so she can get you on the list. We're going to start with Ian Watts. If you would, please come over here. Thank you. And introduce yourself and your address for the record.
My name is Ian Watts. My address is 835 North Fifth Avenue in State in Oregon.
Great town.
Thank you. Yeah, we love it.
Good.
How much time do we have?
Well, it depends on how many people start showing up. So for now, we're going to start with three minutes.
Okay, sounds good. Yeah, so my name is Ian Watts. I'm a chair of a group called Oregon People's Vote. We're an election transparency group in Marion County. And the first thing I wanted to talk about is for the past three elections, we, well, let me actually back up a little bit. This past election, we helped organize observers for both the Marion County GOP as well as some independent observers who wanted to observe. And for the past three elections, we have encountered some observation challenges. For one, we have not been given accurate information about when ballot processing will take place. In fact, in multiple cases, we've been given inaccurate information. This past election, for example, we were specifically told that no processing would be happening over the weekend of October 29th and 30th. But we were watching and we saw the ballot totals increasing and it became obvious that people were working on ballots. When I asked about this on the following Monday, I was told that it was just a mistake. That's understandable, things happen. But if it had been the first time, it might not be noteworthy, but it has happened the past three elections in a row. We were also told to gain entrance to this building on weekends, that security must be hired to escort the observers up to the second floor. And since we had asked on a Friday if anybody was going to be in over the weekend and we were told no, it seems doubtful that there would have been time to hire security to allow any observers to observe the process, which means that over that weekend, in my opinion, observers were effectively barred from observing. Additionally, despite being told last minute about times to arrive for the following weekend, our observers arrived to find that when they got there, there were Democrat observers who were already there and had clearly been notified of what time to be there, but we were not. So I'm not sure where the breakdown is in the process, but it seems like something needs to be tightened up there. As far as for what we observed, one of the things that seemed maybe not quite right is that according to the Vote Oregon Vote by Mail Manual, drivers who pick up ballots are supposed to be sent in pairs and they're supposed to be members of two different parties. It appears that in at least the last two elections, full-time staff members are being sent out to gather ballots on weekends and off-hours from drop boxes when the accounting boards are not present. And I'm not sure that's totally legal. They may technically belong to different parties. They may register under different parties, but it probably violates the spirit of the law since these people know each other well and work together daily. It isn't really a check or a balance. I could go on. I don't know if I'm out of time yet.
You're almost done.
Yeah, yeah, getting close. Yeah, we were also informed that there weren't enough Republican workers hired and that it seemed hard for the opening boards to be paired up with members of another party. There seemed to be an over-hire of Democrat versus Republicans. Not sure why this is the case. Maybe not enough Republicans applied. But if that's the case, we'd appreciate if someone would let us know so that we can remedy the situation for the next election. We also observed things like signatures being passed that probably shouldn't have. In some cases, even the election worker would note that two or three ballots were signed in the same handwriting. So it was as though somebody in the household was signing all the ballots for that household. And this was noted for several names. And when we went back and looked, those names had not been challenged, meaning those ballots had been processed. I'm not sure that that should be happening. There's, yeah, I could go on about some other security things, but I think I'll save that for another comment.
Thank you. Can you actually forward us your comments via email? There's a Commissioners@ email and Brenda can give that to you on a sticky note.
Sure.
And then it will come to all three Commissioners.
Yeah, happy to.
Okay, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
All right, next is Mark Decorse. Same place over here, please. And if you would, introduce yourself and address for the record.
My name is Mark Decorse. I live at 740 Shipping Street in Salem. I wanted to talk about a secret ballot. It, when Tammany Hall was running Chicago and when Jimmy Carter was trying to straighten out the elections in Georgia, the issue of election fraud was huge. It was known at that time that county workers could not be trusted with the elections. It was a well-known that what you need is volunteers, you need paired people from both parties and so on. What we, right now, with a secret ballot myth, it's a polite fiction that we have, that we have a secret ballot. Having watched the election process, having come and observed the processing of the ballots, we, what we require here, what the county is requiring of the public is the public must trust the county employees. There isn't, the process is so complex, no observer can really verify that what should be happening is happening or verify the results of the process. The possibilities are a half a dozen points in the process where election fraud could take place if we had the kind of employees that Tammany Hall used, that Jimmy Carter encountered in Georgia. I'm not accusing the county of anything. I'm not accusing the county workers of anything, but we have the same creatures involved. They're all human beings. And we're not necessarily better human beings than they were in those days. And I think we should have either dispensed with the myth of a secret ballot or we should repair the process so that it is truly a secret ballot as it was originally designed. That's it.
Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Thanks, Mark.
All right, next, and I'm sure I'm going to mess up your last name, is Steve, is it Coffenauer?
Coenauer.
I for sure messed it up. If you'd come over here, Mr. Coenauer. Thank you for being here. Same as the rest, please introduce yourself, name and address for the record.
Steve Coenauer. My address is 4438 Essex Street Southeast Salem, Oregon. And to know how to pronounce that name, your ancestors would have had to come from Holland around the 1500s.
Well, they did not, so therefore I do not know how.
Then you bear no blame. I'm here to talk about...
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Would you pull the microphone closer so Al can hear? Thank you.
Here to talk about Measure 14. I am a last-minute stand-in for some people who are allergic to wet, rainy, windy weather. I hope I have all my information correct. Measure 114 was recently passed in Oregon. Concerns mainly guns and laws affecting them. A lawsuit has been filed to oppose Measure 114, at least one. And... There is, they have, the people who filed the lawsuit are using a precedent case that's already been passed by the Supreme Court of the United States as their, part of their evidence. There is a, here, there is, they have asked for an injunction to keep Measure 114 from being implemented on December 8th. There is a hearing that has been scheduled, whether to allow that injunction to take effect or not to take effect. I hope I have this information right. You, as the Marion County Commissioners, can either allow that hearing to take effect or not allow it to take effect. I'm here to ask that you allow that hearing to take effect.
Thank you. The hearing, the court case was actually filed in a county not local to us by the Oregon Firearms Federation. We're aware of that filing and our legal counsel will be following it closely and will update us and our sheriff's office as necessary so that way we can work to not be out of compliance with the law because we do have to be in compliance with something that's passed until a court tells us otherwise.
There may be more than one lawsuit filed.
I imagine so.
But we don't have control over the hearings, do we?
No, no, we don't.
That's the courts. The courts decide whether there's hearings or not and what, when they are and all that.
Then I apologize. If I am in error, I was told that you have the authority to allow or deny the hearing.
We do not, but we do know about it and we will be following it closely.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here. And last on the list right now is Gail Strawn. Good morning, Gail.
Good morning. I'm really not quite sure. I originally came to be with the elections because I have some things, some declarations to hand off to that group.
Okay.
Because I, can I speak to both?
You can first introduce yourself for the record, name and address, please. And then you can tell us whatever you want. You can sing to us if you'd like. We're happy you're here.
And I'll stand up for it.
You might fall down if I sing. Gail Strawn, 6485 Nesting Place Southeast Salem, 97317.
Great.
Okay, thank you. So, thank you. So, yeah, I originally came down here to be part of the Election Oregon Vote Peoples because I, in my limited spare time, have gathered several declarations, which I've handed off to Anna, and I found that rather easy to find people who were registered to vote in 2020 who were really not living there at that household in 2020. And it was really easy to find that because we were one of them. When Anna was showing me how to use the system, voteref.com, lo and behold, someone who lived with me for six, us for six months was still there, moved out of state. So that piqued my curiosity and I was able to find several. One at our renter's, Rick's sister. I mean, it was really easy to find people who were registered in 2020 that were not living at that address. So I think that what Ian is doing, what that group is doing is very valuable to the integrity of our vote. And then when I came in and I realized maybe we could say something about Measure 114, I just find it so sad that so many people have taken an oath of office to defend the Constitution and that is not happening on both sides of the party. And Measure 114 is clearly unconstitutional. And the Constitution is just a piece of paper until we, the people, start enforcing it and start asking for it to be enforced. And this lawsuit, I don't know much about it, but I do know that a couple sheriffs have stepped up. But it is just not up to the sheriffs to step up. You Commissioners can help us too. And so that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Thanks for being here.
You bet. Thank you. Uh huh, bye-bye.
Okay, and we have no other individuals signed up for public comment. Thanks, Brenda. So we will move on to a presentation of the 2022 Project Joy fundraiser kickoff. Kathy Bolin, Kaylee Kinsey, and that's it. Not Lori. Okay.
Madam Chair, I guess we could. I know we don't normally comment after public comment, but I'd like to because I just, there are a few things that I, I think, need to be clarified. One is that we don't have legal authority over elections. We have an elected clerk. So by statute, the person who has legal authority is Bill Burgess, who sits right there. He's sitting right now. He doesn't always sit right there. So, so I think for folks that are interested, who are watching, who are interested in how the clerk is interpreting the statute and the rules regarding elections, he has the legal authority to do that. We don't. So I think I just want to clarify that for everybody. We have budget authority, so we pay for the staff that works for the clerk's office, but we have elections every four years for county clerk and that person has legal authority to interpret the rules and implement the rules around elections. So I just wanted to say that so that people know that. And I do have a concern about one of the statutes that was passed. I actually couldn't believe it was the case, but our lawyer came and actually read the law to us that was passed, where if a ballot is delivered after Election Day and it's not postmarked, it can be counted, which that was not the way that that law was characterized. It was characterized that if it was postmarked before Election Day, it could be counted. But the statute actually reads that if a ballot's delivered after Election Day and it's not postmarked, it can be counted. And so I'm personally concerned about that. This is my public comment. I'm going to advocate for the legislature change that law. I don't think that's a good law. But again, that's something that the legislature has the authority to change, not us. So I just wanted to say those things.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Good.
Okay.
I agree with the Commissioner.
I completely agree with you. All right, Kathy.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Kathy Bolin. I work in the Human Resources Office. I'm the Workforce Development Coordinator. And I'm here today with Kaylee Kinsey from Project Joy. And we're here today to just explain a little bit about what Project Joy is, who they support, give a little bit of data from last year and what we collected last year, and then talk about some exciting new updates for this year as well. So Project Joy supports foster children in our area, some of the most vulnerable in our community. And just looking at some numbers from 2021, there were just over 200 certified foster homes in Marion County and approximately 670 children in the foster care system here in the county. And most of these kids are under the age of 12, although we do have some teens in the system as well. But they typically stay in one place, an average of anywhere between 18, 18 months to two years. These kids in the foster care system typically are put into foster care because of some sort of abuse or neglect that made their homes unsafe, whether that's substance abuse of their parents, sexual abuse, physical abuse, abandonment. And in turn, many of these kids experience some difficulties, sometimes physical, sometimes emotional, sometimes developmental or behavioral. And so the state provides for the general care and well-being of these kids, but the funds don't normally stretch far enough to cover things like Christmas gifts and birthday gifts. So each year, each year Kaylee sends Marion County employees a wish list of these kids. And last year, we were able to support 50 families in the system and 128 foster children in their care. And we were able to fulfill every single wish that these kids had, and then some. Our staff purchased over 400 gifts. That included toys, that included clothes, diapers, backpacks, PJs, all sorts of fun things. And so Marion County, through the support of our employees and our community, we raised over $10,000 last year through gifts and cash donations. Since I've been doing this, I mean, every year, the generosity of our employees is just astounding to me. Everybody loves this fundraiser. It's great. So we do have some exciting updates for this year. So Project Joy 2022 kicked off on November 21st and it'll run through December 9th with some little elves running around our Marion County locations picking up gifts on December 12th. And, you know, all of those involved with Project Joy, especially Kaylee, and she's going to talk about this in a little bit, but it's always been the mission of Project Joy to involve and support the whole family who provides resources to these kiddos in care. And this year, we have an opportunity to not only support the foster kids but the biological and adopted children in these households as well. I mean, these resource families love and sacrifice every day for children in their care. And biological and adopted kids are no exception. They sacrifice their time, they share their lives with these kids, living in their homes. And being able to provide gifts to all the children residing in the resource family's home, it'll let them know how much the community appreciates what they do. So this year, we had, on our list, on our wish list, we have 67 families supporting 215 kids. It's a really large list this year. So in addition to the wish list items, the specific toys that they're hoping to get, we're also asking for donations of diapers, toiletries, and of course monetary donations are also welcome. Anybody that's interested in donating can either mail their donation to the address on the slide or they can bring it to the Courthouse Square at 555 Court Street. Here, Human Resources is on the fourth floor. We will gladly take the donation. And just to note that if you donate any monetary checks, those should be made out to the Oregon Foster Parents Association, not Marion County. So one more fun update that I'd like to share with you. We've also been very fortunate this year with an outside supporter. You may have heard of the Brothers Collection, but the Brothers Collection reached out to us this year. They've been wanting to help. And if you're not familiar with the Brothers Collection, I'll just share a little bit about who they are. They are one of the most comprehensive muscle car collections in the world and they live here in Salem. This museum lives here in Salem. So it's over, this museum is over 117,000 square feet. It is huge. It houses over 350 muscle cars and exotic sports cars. And they're opening their museum on December 4th from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. to anyone who would like to support Project Joy. So not just Marion County employees, but the community as well. So if you love muscle cars, this is a great way that you can contribute to Project Joy. All are welcome. They are asking for admission. They're collecting at the door. Admission is $10 plus one unwrapped toy and 100% of those proceeds will benefit the Project Joy fundraiser. So the address for the museum is 3930 Fairview Industrial Drive Southeast, but if you plug that into your GPS, it may or may not lead you there. So Brothers Collection folks are going to be putting up signs as you get close to get you in the right place. So be watching for those signs if you want to take advantage this Sunday. So just to conclude, I just want to say, you know, without the support of our Commissioners and our community and our awesome staff every year, especially those who are helping me co-coordinate this fundraiser, Sherry Littner, Heather Johnson, Janine Wisner, Shalise McDonald, and all of the department coordinators who are organizing collection in their area. I mean, we wouldn't be able to fulfill the holiday wishes for these Marion County children. So I really want to thank you for your continued support of this program. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Kaylee Kinsey and allow her to introduce herself and share some great information about how these donations are going to benefit the children in our community.
Good morning. My name is Kaylee. And, you know, I really, it is my pleasure to serve in this capacity, these families who really, to spend over backwards for these kids in care. And like I, like you said, you know, we really have had it on our hearts to wrap around the entire family for a number of years and we're excited to make this happen. I wanted to share a letter from one of our families. And she reached out because this is the first year they're participating in Project Joy. Her name is Erin Cox. And this is her letter. "We decided to sign up for Project Joy because adopted and biological children are now included. We've been foster parents for the last five years and completely understand why the focus on the various gift-giving programs is on the kiddos in care. Obviously, it's very important to support our kiddos in DHS custody. As with most foster parents, we've had some rough cases and a placement from the last year has especially been an emotional roller coaster for our family. It really touches us that Project Joy, with Project Joy, someone sees all of our kids and realizes that fostering is difficult, even on those kiddos that aren't in DHS care. Our biological and adopted kiddos are also on this roller coaster and have given up a lot of their own interests as our family needs to be available to transport our placements to all the DHS required visits, appointments, court hearings, host and host caseworkers, certifiers, lawyers, and causes. We do not usually participate in giveaways and such because, hold on, let me see, because there are people that need it more. But we're so excited with Project Joy that maybe all of our kids will be seen and given an extra measure of joy this holiday season. I'm brought to tears because of the encouragement of this project to the entire family. We haven't told the kids in case it doesn't work out, but it's encouraging to be able to sign up. And I wanted to say thank you for all of your time, effort, and work bringing joy and hope to foster families." And it really blessed my heart because this is why I wanted to wrap around the whole family is to, to represent that, you know, we appreciate all that they do and how much they love these kids and sacrifice for them. Of course, we love the foster kids and I'm so glad that we're here for them. But it just, it just really, I think, makes a difference and eases a burden, you know, that we can help them not just at Christmas, but throughout the year. I wanted to say that those funds stretch much farther than just Christmas. We're able to do birthday gifts, family gifts, gift cards to exciting things like Get Air and Pietro's Pizza. And we've just been, just really blessing the families this year with those funds. And we've just been, um, just really blessing the families this year with those funds. And, and we just really appreciate all of your support, so the entire community really, um, just for what you guys have done and, and shown us that, you know, there's, there's some good out there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments?
Pietro's Pizza sounds good.
This is one of my favorites.
Thank you for what you do. Appreciate it.
This is just one of my favorite fundraisers we do every year.
Yeah, excellent.
Mine too.
Thanks Kathy for coordinating it, Sherry and all the team. All right. Commissioners, if it's okay with you, um, there was a few people that came in after we had moved on to the presentation. Are you interested in providing public comment? Sure. Yes, you came in late. Would you like to provide public, public comment today? You don't, if you're not here to do that, you're not required to. No, that's okay. Just go ahead and come over here to the microphone at this table. And when you're complete with your public comment, Brenda will collect information from you to pass this down there. We'll need you to give us your name and address for the record once you sit down.
Well, I, I didn't come here prepared to comment, but, um, since you're inviting me, my name is Rebecca Roth. And, um, I'm very concerned about the, the illegal vote that removes our right to carry arms. It removes our constitutional right to purchase a gun. And, um, the, there's so many difficulties with this illegal vote that was taken. Um, it should never have been on the ballot. Citizens of Oregon should not have the right to remove a constitutional right from other citizens. And we, uh, are going to suffer. When you take away guns from people, it doesn't decrease crime, it increases crime. And I've been rescued. I don't personally carry a gun, but I hold signs on the street, and that's exercising my First Amendment right. And, uh, I've been rescued by somebody who was carrying a gun, who rescued me from a group of people that was trying to start a riot around me. And, uh, I'm very thankful for the person who had a gun and would have used it if they would have needed to. But fortunately, as he took my arm and said, "Come on Becky, let's get going", um, the, the, I don't know, we, somehow we got out of the problem. Anyway, I, I just, I'm so thankful for all the people who have permits to carry guns. They have a very low crime rate. People who are permitted by the state of Oregon to, um, what do you call it? Concealed carry, concealed carry. They've already passed the test. They're, they're trustworthy. They're going to try to solve a problem without shooting anybody. But they carry a gun so that they can have enough clout to get out of a situation. And that's what happened with me being rescued. I would have been injured seriously if the rioters had been able to do what they were trying to do. So, um, I would like the commissioners to declare this. I don't know what powers you have, but I would like you to declare this Marion County to be, and I wish you had the power to declare the state of Oregon a constitutional county. And, uh, don't let the people who want to commit crimes take our guns from us. Thank you.
Thank you for being here, Rebecca. Is there anybody else? Okay. Thank you all for being here today. We're going to move on to our consent calendar. Commissioner Willis, would you read that, please?
I would. Madam Chair, uh, under, I move that we approve the consent agenda. Under the Clerk's office, approve orders reappointing Bob Riggy as chairperson and Jennifer Sasaki as vice chairperson to the chairpersons pool, and Gerald Baumann and Jack Yarborough to the non-office holding pool for the Marion County Board of Property Tax Appeals, with the term ending June 30th, 2023. Under Community Services, approve the fair management agreement between Marion County and the Marion County Fair Board for updates to protocols and responsibilities for managing the Marion County Fair through November 30th, 2027. Under Health and Human Services, approve amendment number 11 to the intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Health Authority and add $3,373.05 for a new contract total of $19,182,455.35 for adjustments to the financial assistance award funding for tuberculosis case management program element PE3 through June 30th, 2023. Under Public Works, receive notice of the hearing officer's decision approving Zone Change Comprehensive Plan Amendment, ZCCP, case number 22-002, Jason Fussner, and schedule a public hearing for December 14th, 2022. And approve an order authorizing the annual application of dust abatement measures for a portion of Cemetery Hill Road, a local access road for a period of 10 years, starting in 2023 and ending in 2033. Under Treasurer's Office, approve an order distributing Oregon State Forest, Forestry Timber Revenue in the amount of $367,062.60 as per ORS Chapter 530.
I'll second the motion.
You have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, the motion passes. And now we'll move on to a list of action items. And today, the first under Business Services is to consider approval of an order adopting revised Marion County Administrative Policy 801 and Procedure 801A, scheduling and use of Marion County facilities. Tamara.
Hi. Hello. Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Tamara Gedge, Director of Business Services. Uh, before you today, uh, as you've just read, is a policy for consideration that has been updated after review. Uh, these policy changes are identified on page 17 of your packet. And just for the public's information, policies are reviewed periodically, and if there are any substantial changes, those changes come before the board for consideration. So, uh, this is one of those that has a little bit more detail in it and need your approval. Uh, so as I mentioned, the redline version, uh, in the packet, it starts on seven, page 17. And I'm just going to highlight the major changes that are listed in this rather than read through all the individuals. So we've, these changes include clarity on the prioritization of the use of various conference rooms throughout our county facilities. It also ensures that any use of our facilities are going to be used safely, uh, that we have the security or ensure that we have what is needed to keep everyone in using those facilities safe, safely, and then just making sure that the use of the property is appropriate and in alignment with Marion County. Additionally, we provided more detail in the policy around the scheduling and that procedure. And then we've also making sure that we have alignment with local, state, and federal laws that are needed for use of our facilities. Um, we are also clarifying the procedures or the process in which a county or, uh, outside organization would take to reserve the use of a facility within Marion County's jurisdiction and the, how that approval would happen. And we've identified that our facilities are closed on 10 holidays throughout each annual, or each year. We've clarified our language around alcohol and smoking and the restrictions around those items. And then we've also added after-use expectations. So not only do you, if approved, you get to use the facility, but we are expecting that they are, the rooms are returned to its original state. Additionally, in your packet, we've made updates to the request form and the internal procedures that we would use to make sure that anybody who wants to use this, we would follow throughout, uniformly throughout each of the departments as appropriate. And in general, that's kind of what this update to the policy includes. But I'm open to any questions that you may have on this particular policy adjustment.
Thank you. Any questions?
Uh, maybe just could I make a few comments?
Sure.
Um, so, so Tamara, one of the things I see, and I just want to kind of highlight a few other things. One of the things we put in here is that Marion County employees can't use the facilities for their personal use outside of the normal process, right?
Correct.
So the taxpayers pay for these buildings, these facilities, for county use. So primarily, it's for county use. But the county doesn't use these facilities all the time, and so there is a process for, uh, outside organizations to, to rent the room. But employees are treated the same as anybody else. They don't get special access to do that.
Correct. Absolutely. That is included in there.
Commissioner, anything?
That's good. Good updates.
I think, would you make a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve an order adopting revised Marion County Administrative Policy 801 and Procedure 801A, scheduling and use of Marion County facilities.
I'll second the motion.
You have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, the motion passes. Thanks, Tamara.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the Sheriff's Office to consider approval of the ratification of the Marion County Law Enforcement Association, MCLEA, collective bargaining agreement for 2022-2024 under Sheriff Wood and Salvador. I knew, I knew you were not racing to the front to determine who was going to get the big seat.
Now we should all rise.
Yeah, right.
I rose for you, Commissioner.
Yeah.
Full delay there, Jeff.
Uh, good morning, Commissioners. Again, thank you for your time. For the record, uh, my name is Jeff Wood, and I serve as the Under Sheriff for the Marion County Sheriff's Office, and with me is...
Salvador Jarenas, Chief Human Resources Officer here at City County.
And we are here today before you to hopefully consider approval for ratification of the Marion County Law Enforcement Association, or MCLEA, collective bargaining agreement, uh, for the 22-24, I call it, biennium. Uh, as you are well aware, although MCLEA is not the largest association in Marion County, they are the largest association within the Sheriff's Office. Um, just for the public record, Sheriff's Office has a budget of around $83 million, I think currently, and 380-ish authorized employees, of which I'd say about half are MCLEA members. Uh, through Oregon Revised Statute, sheriffs throughout Oregon are required to be the conservators of the peace throughout the county. These are the folks that actually do it. Um, these are the ones who respond to 911 calls. These are the ones who patrol the unincorporated areas of the county, our contract cities, and special service districts. These are the folks that take in people that commit criminal, uh, who commit criminal activity within our county into our jail. They keep our jails safe. They keep our adults in custody safe. Um, they work on transitional programs, uh, in our transition center. Uh, they process civil paperwork. They issue civil paperwork. They keep our courthouse and the employees within it safe, as well as courthouse square and the annex. Uh, in short, they do a lot of work and, uh, and do the lion's share of the work, although Sheriff and myself get a lot of credit. These are the folks that do a lot of the day-to-day activity to keep our community safe. In terms of the contract itself, um, the, the overall total, to your total, is a little over $4.1 million. Uh, the vast majority, $2.4 million, uh, within this contract are for COLAs. I believe they're 5% COLAs for two years. Uh, and the rest are associated incentives, side letter agreements, and some shift differentials that we implemented this year, say for our nursing staff or our FSA, not our FSAs, for our nursing staff, and, um, for some special details like crash. The acronym, acronym is fairly self-explaining that these are the folks that respond to fatal crashes within our roadways, I will say. They'd be the first to say they're not, not mathematicians, but they do an incredible amount of work of logistical analysis so that they can turn it over to the district attorney if necessary, so that they can do a very thorough investigation that often does lead to the end of life for our citizens. And so we believe this contract total of $4.1 million covers the areas in terms of the impacts of the pandemic, COVID, uh, the requirements of the work. It incentivizes areas like for the certification that we, they, and we receive from the Department of Public Safety Standards and Training so that we can have the best workforce possible within the Sheriff's Office. Salvador, did you?
So those are the main points of, of the contract. So additionally, there was a lot of cleanup language through, through, uh, the bargaining process. Um, there was clarifications in Article 1, uh, 3, and 5. Uh, there was a, uh, addition to the genting, to the list of holidays. Um, and other articles of significance was the, uh, clarification of the drug and alcohol testing to comply with county policy. So those are the highest notes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions, comments?
I'm going to comment on this one. And I, I'm a, first, I want to say I am so grateful for the work that our law enforcement folks do every day. And, um, they put their lives on the line for us. Um, and I'm just so grateful. They do a phenomenal job in the Sheriff's Office. Um, I think that they, uh, I'm going to say this on the record, that their lawyer was a little overzealous this time, the person representing the union. And so for folks, uh, just for their information, we had a situation now where because you're in law enforcement, they're strike prohibited, which means they can't strike. So the way this works is if we can't come to an agreement, um, eventually we get to a place where an arbitrator just picks. We both submit our final proposals, and they have to pick one. And, um, nobody wants to go into that situation, and it took a really long time, and my opinion is that it shouldn't have taken that long. Um, but I'm grateful that our team did a good job and that the arbitrator thought that we had the most reasonable proposal here. And so, um, I'm, I'm, I look back on that as it shouldn't have gone that far. I think, um, that, uh, hopefully next time it doesn't. But I think this is the, the best deal we could have gotten under the circumstances.
Commissioner, I agree with you. Aye. This took, I think, 12 years of our, 12 years, sorry.
It felt like 12 years.
Uh, 12, almost 12 months of our lives that honestly, we won't get back. Um, at times, it was problematic and a bit contentious. Um, I am glad we are where we are currently. Uh, it is unfortunate that went to binding arbitration. Um, but I, I believe in terms of what we were trying to do, we're, uh, this is a generous contract. I do believe we treat our employees very well, and I think this contract serves to, um, highlight that. Uh, like you, again, I, I wish it was, I wish we didn't have to go to binding arbitration, but I will say, uh, I, I do appreciate both Salvador and Jane in terms of their effort that they put towards this. I've joked about this with other contracts. Sometimes I think my only role is comedic sarcasm, especially when things get a little dark. Um, and they helped steadfast. Um, and here we are. And, and hopefully we can move forward with next time being a non-arbitration agreement.
Question?
Yeah, just the only comment is this is retro back, back to, uh, July 1st, right?
Elements of it are, yes.
Yeah.
Probably the, the COLAs is what you're referencing, and yes, they do.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you all for your work. All right. Commissioner Willis, would you make a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the ratification of Marion County Law Enforcement Association Collective Bargaining Agreement for 2022-2024.
I'll second the motion.
A motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, the motion passes. Thank you. Have a great day. And now we'll move on to Public Works to consider adoption of an administrative ordinance granting Zone Change Comprehensive Plan, case number 22001, Trung Dip and Illicit, illicit to you. I never get their names right. One of these days, I'll meet these people and they can correct me.
Nobody's ever corrected me, so.
Okay.
On those, I think you're right.
I try.
Uh, good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Lindsay King, Marion County Planning. The item before you today is an application to change the comprehensive plan designation from multifamily residential to single-family residential, and to change the zone from urban development to single-family residential. Uh, it's on a 7, .76 acre parcel located at 4694 Center Street Northeast in Salem. The property is located on the south side of Center Street, approximately three quarters of a mile east of Lancaster. The hearings officer conducted a public hearing on March 31st of this year and on June 28th issued a recommendation that the board deny the request. The board held, held a duly notice public hearing on August 31st of this year and considered all of the evidence in the record and approved that request. of the evidence in the record and approved that request. The ordinance and findings have been prepared, and the notice of adoption was given on November 9. The administrative ordinance is now set for formal adoption. The board may adopt the ordinance as written, direct staff to prepare a modified ordinance, or choose not to sign and adopt the ordinance at this time. Staff recommends that the board adopt the ordinance as written, and I'll stand for any questions you might have.
I just, Lindsay, I just want to, can you give me the visual again? Because we've had a lot of land. This is the one off of Lancaster, kind of on the north side of Center Street?
It's south, just south of that specific property you're talking of. It's an already-developed property.
Right.
It's next to, I believe it's a church.
Yeah, and there's like a ton of apartments in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Thanks. Yes. Okay. Thank you. That's all I had. Any questions, Commissioners?
No. Madam Chair, if you're ready.
I'm ready.
Yeah. Madam Chair, I'll move that we adopt an administrative ordinance granting zone change comprehensive plan amendment, ZCCP, case number 21001 Trung Depp and Alyssa Two.
Okay, and I'll second the motion.
Why? This is not an emergency.
No.
I have a motion in a second.
What do you want us to do, counsel?
I just want you to move to read it by title.
Okay.
So you want me to remove my motion and start over again?
Or you can amend it.
So I'm not clear here. We never, we never have had to do this by title. Why are we doing it now?
Under the code, if you're going to adopt an administrative ordinance, you read it by title.
So the motion would be move that we adopt this administrative ordinance and read it by title? Is that the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Why don't you just make that motion? We can go forward.
Why don't you go ahead and make the motion? I'm going to withdraw my motion.
Okay.
Okay, withdraw.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the administrative ordinance granting zone change comprehensive plan, ZCCP, case number 22-01, and read it by title.
Can you second the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Thanks. I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. The motion passes. So now what do we do?
Now you read it by title.
What are we reading by title, I think, is the problem? Because this is not set up for that.
So the caption of the ordinance of is...
In the matter.
Oh.
That's, yeah, so this isn't set up that way. So we're all a little stunned.
In the matter of adopting the application of Trung Depp and Alyssa Two.
Okay. So I'm reading that now?
You can.
Do I need to read it twice?
Nope.
Great. Okay. So reading the ordinance by title in the matter of application of Trung Depp and Alyssa Two.
All right.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay. No, you're fine. In the future, maybe, Brenda can be updated, so that way we're fully aware of what's happening, and we don't get hung up on that.
Yeah.
That would be great. Thank you. Okay, now we're going to move on. Scott Wilson to consider approval of the purchase order with the Ennis Flint Incorporated in the amount of $5,500,000 for the purchase of yellow and white paint required for striping roads in Marion County retroactive May 1, 2022 through April 30, 2027. Hey, Scott.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Scott Wilson. I'm the Operations Division Manager for Marion County Public Works. I'm here today to ask you to consider the approval of purchase order number 911288 for the purchase of traffic paint for Ennis Flint Incorporated. This PO will allow us to purchase, the purchase of yellow and white striping paint using Mo Mo County's Cooperative Agreement number DCS-Goods-13923-2022. This agreement has a five-year term and is effective April 1 of 2022 through April 30 of 2027. For fiscal year 2022 and 2023, this is, this budget amount is already for $1,100,000. The total PO of this amount is $5,000, or $5,500,000, and this will cover the five-year term of this agreement.
Hey, Scott, can you move the microphone to your mouth? It's not picking up on the television. Thank you. I just got the wave, so.
Okay. We can hear you, but...
Yes.
Got it. Okay.
But the world wants to hear you.
Perfect. Perfect. This paint will be, is to be purchased will provide the necessary traffic safety requirements using, used for striping Marion County roads, as well as roads of all the other public agencies that request driving services from Public Works. And as you see on the slide, we, on an annual basis, we purchase about 50,000 gallons of paint, both yellow and white. We will apply this paint. It covers about 2,800 miles of both white shoulder line paint and the center line yellow paint. Two-thirds of the work that we do is within Marion County roads, and then the third is done by some of our neighboring cities within Marion County, and then we have two, two other county jurisdictions that we help them out with as well. So options for you is to approve this PO for the purchase, or number two, deny the approval. Public Works recommends the Board of Commissioners approve the PO to purchase striping paint from Ennis Flint Incorporated. And I'm here for any further questions.
Thanks, Scott. Is there any questions, Commissioners?
Just wondering if those are the stripes I put down.
No, they're way too straight. Way too straight.
Great. Mr. Willis?
We still owe Commissioner Willis a...
I know.
A test drive in the paint truck? It's kind of fun. Just wait till you get to the corner. That's the hard part.
I'm not interested, thanks.
Well, I was willing to offer my invitation. I was looking ready for you to try and...
In all seriousness, it is a very talent, it's a talent to be able to do that. I mean, you've got to know what you're doing. Try to go on the corner when, when the sprayer's in behind you, and you've got to look out your mirror, and you've got to keep the, they don't even have a cruise control on the truck, at least the one I was on. So you have to keep the speed the right thing. You've got, it's like, doing that all day would be, oof, be hard. So...
Takes talent.
They needed an extra 50,000 gallons after I got done to go back out there.
That is not the case.
Okay. Mr. Willis, would you make the motion?
I will. Madam Chair, I move that we approve the purchase order with Ennis Flint Incorporated in the amount of $5,500,000 for the purchase of yellow and white paint required for striping roads in Marion County retroactive to May 1, 2022 through April 30, 2027.
I'll second the motion.
No motion in a second. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just, I want to say this is really important, especially in the weather we're having right now, and the dark, dark, and the rain, and trying to, last night, I was, and I don't know, I think we have shared jurisdiction with River Road, and I was going home in the dark. We were all leaving in the dark from Mount Angel, and to be able to, you know, you've got lights shining in your face, and be able to see the white line on the side and stay on the white, you know, on the white side. This is just really important for our safety, and appreciate the work that our Public Works does to keep us safe on the road, especially in weather like we're having right now.
It's funny that you say that, because this morning, my daughter was actually in an accident on Mission Street because the weather's coming at her, and there's no coloring on the medians, and there's a median just east of Mission Street that is kind of like a curb, and it's just concrete. And she couldn't see the line, and she couldn't see the thing, and she hit it, and out her cars. It was not a great situation. She's fine, but I'm going to be calling the city of Salem and wondering why that is not at least yellowed? Because ours are yellow, like our medians that stand up off the ground. I know this because I drove in on a county road today that had one, and I was like, see? It's yellow. It should be yellow. Mayor Hoy, I'm calling. It needs to be yellow or white. Because I got a call at 6:00 this morning, and it was not awesome. So we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Thanks, Scott.
All right. Now we're going to move on. Max to seek, consider approval of the Marion County Public Works Land Development Engineering and Permits Practice Memorandum for secondary access requests to provide guidance for the permitting of secondary accesses from roads under county jurisdictions.
Quite a lengthy one. Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Max Hepper, and I am the Land Development Engineering and Permits Supervisor with Public Works. For your consideration today is the Practice Memorandum for the Department Regarding Secondary Accesses. Land Development Engineering and Permits, or LD for short, is responsible for applying county codes, rules, policies, regulations to private impacts to the public right-of-way under county's jurisdiction. A common request is being able to provide secondary accesses to properties in which current regulations with the county don't give a very clear guidance or framework on how to get to yes, if you will. So we took this to you in management update in October, I believe it was on the 25th, with the draft form of this, and this is the version that is in front of you for consideration for signature. The goal of this is to provide that framework for the public and county staff under my department to be able to speak that same language to get to yes, and see what options are available to be able to provide that secondary access, which is a, again, a common request that we get. So I'm happy to address any questions that you do have at this time.
The only question that I have, Max, is there was a recent request that came through, and you guys have been navigating it for some time, and both Commissioner Cameron and I were able to talk to that citizen. And I'm really grateful for the work that your team has put in, and then also Brian Nicholas to drive out to his property last week to kind of look at it, to see for himself how to get to yes. One of the things that I was curious about, and I didn't really get a clear answer, is in the event that you do everything you can in Public Works and the citizen is still not satisfied, what's their appeal process? Because I don't think that's written in here. If it is, if you could draw my attention to it, that would be great.
There is not really an established appeal process. Typically, that is just elevating above my head to my county engineer, then the director, and of course, the board if there's, there's a decision in there.
Okay.
So, and legal counsel can correct me like she will. But if I look, and you were wondering about this question, if I look at 11 dot 10 dot 020, it's authority, it's our authority.
Okay.
The next one, we're delegating that authority to, in this case, Brian, the Director of Public Works. So I believe that the, the person could come back to us, and, and we could bring Brian into the room and say, okay, or whatever. We still have the ultimate authority according to that. Now, I know there's different road authorities. We're the, we're the road authority, but the Public Works Director also has authority that can veto certain things, too, Jane. So, but that's how I would see the appeal process works, based on this.
Okay.
That they would be able to come back to us.
I mean, practically, they appeal the way they usually do, which is they send us an email and say, hey, why isn't this working? That's how this came about.
That's how this is here, yeah. Okay. That's, I'm fine with that.
But in the case that you're talking about, I really want to thank Brian for going out and getting, getting that...
Getting to yes.
Yeah, getting to yes.
Ultimately, which is awesome.
Well, and I'd like to make a comment, too, if I may, Madam Chair.
Sure.
Because this is one where I think a lot of, this is a common question.
Yeah.
Why does Public Works not allow me to put an additional access onto this road, right? I mean, that's something that lots of people will say, it's my property, why the heck can't I put an access onto the road, right? And so I do want to say, I think, until you're, you're kind of doing this work, you don't think about if every person puts as many driveways as they want on a road, all of a sudden, that road becomes very hard to navigate. And so that's part of why we have these standards and why we look at access on the roads, is because it needs to work for everybody, and for it to work for everybody, sometimes that means that we have to, you know, say you only get to have one driveway. You don't get to have multiple driveways. But what happened in this instance is Max and Brian, the Commissioners, we looked at these rules and said, okay, but we can be overly strict on that, right? There can be times where it doesn't actually impede the public's use of this road. It doesn't actually endanger anybody for somebody to have a secondary access, and we shouldn't have a rule just for the sake of a rule. We should, we should try to make this work for as many people as possible. So in those instances where a secondary access won't interfere with everybody else's ability to use that road, then we want to get to yes. We want to make that happen if we can, and that's really what this is about, so.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Commissioner, would you make a motion?
I will. Madam Chair, I move that we approve Marion County Public Works Land Developing Engineer and Permits LDEP Practice Memorandum for Secondary Access Requests to provide guidance for permitting of secondary access from roads under county jurisdiction.
Do you want me to read it by title?
I'm sorry.
I'll second the motion.
Some motion in a second, some sarcasm. Is there anything else? Okay, hearing none. Would you, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. The motion passes. Thanks, Max. And there's no reason to be sorry. It is what it is.
I'll make it shorter.
This is what people get to see as Commissioners in the real form.
Appreciate it. Have a good day.
You, too. Okay, now we're going to move on to consider approval of Amendment Number One to the Incoming Funds Intergovernmental Agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation to add $164,000, of which an estimated $147,157 will be provided in federal funds, and an estimated $16,843 will be provided in county funds for a new contract total of $5,328,298 for the Rambler Drive Southeast Little Pudding River Bridge Repair Project through December 9, 2030. Oh, my gosh.
Yes.
Yes, a presentation.
I get to see a presentation.
Hi, Ryan.
So excited that you show up.
Marion County Capitol Projects Manager. Like you said, we're here to talk about our Rambler Drive Little Pudding River Bridge Project in our Amendment One with our Oregon Department of Transportation, IGA. So the project's located northeast of Salem, between Salem and Mount Angel. You can see near Lake Lebiche. So...
I cannot see that. Oh, there you go.
Now, we, it's one of our largest bridges. It's 1,575 feet long. It's a two-lane timber bridge, so it is our largest timber bridge. It was built in 1963, so it's almost 60 years old. And there are some really nice photos. You can see it goes over the old lake bed.
It's one of the coolest bridges I think we have in Marion County, and almost the most terrifying.
So the original project scope was not to replace the bridge, but to rehabilitate the bridge. So we're going to replace the existing rotting timber decking and apply a new wearing surface and replace timber pile caps and compromised timber piles. Where there's rot, we're going to go through and selectively choose those members within the bridge to extend the life of this bridge. And then finally, we're going to replace the bridge rail, because it's an old wooden bridge rail, with something that's crash-rated and safer, and construct approach guard rail on each side of the bridge. So Amendment Number One, this amendment actually doesn't change the scope of our project at all. What it does is it adds $164,000. Of that, $147,157 is federal, and the rest is county money to match that federal money. And that's in order to hire a consultant to design this. We were very successful in our last round of bridge grant applications, and we actually got more bridge grants than we had capacity to deliver in-house. So we have to add money so that we can go out to a consultant and actually get these delivered on schedule. We plan to construct this project starting in 2024.
Congratulations on your grant application process. It's a good problem to have, even though some people might not understand why. I think it's excellent. You have any questions?
Madam Chair, Ryan, can you go back to the slide of where this is located? I think I drove over this yesterday on the way to Mount Angel.
You probably did.
Because I went a new route.
You said you took a new road. I was like, what road is that? Can you go back to?
No, that's good. Is is the bridge on Rambler?
It is. So it goes, okay, I did not go across it. But there's another couple of wood bridges out there someplace that were pretty long, I thought. I was gonna say, this one's long enough that it's hard to miss when you go over it.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it's tall, and when you get in the middle of it, there's no water.
I've been on that. I know which one it is. But that one's going, it goes north and south. Yeah. I wasn't going north and south.
No, this one goes east and west. Sorry, yeah, east and west.
It goes east and west.
Oh, then I probably did go over.
The north and south one is the one that goes from Easy Orchards, like, I can't remember the name of the road, that pops out on Brooks. That is also very terrifying.
And I drove over it yesterday. Yeah.
Yeah.
I went, I took a new route to Mount Angel. I went up to Brooks Exit and got off and then went out that way.
Oh.
Yeah.
Good for you.
I was talking on the phone, not paying attention, and I missed the Hazel Green Exit. Don't tell anybody that.
Where's the county sheriff when you need him?
Yeah. I was on hands-free.
Oh, good job. Is that it, Ryan?
That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Willis, would you please make the motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve Amendment Number One to the Incoming Funds Intergovernmental Agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation to add $164,000, of which an estimated $147,157 will be provided in federal funds and an estimated $16,843 will be provided in county funds for a new contract total of $5,328,298 for the Rambler Drive Southeast Little Pudding River Bridge Repair Project through December 9th, 2030.
I'll second the motion.
Motion in a second. And just before I ask for the vote, the idea here is to not kind of challenge or change the integrity of the look, right? It's just to structurally make it more sound. It's still going to be a timber bridge, it's still going to look really cool.
It will, so a lot of the the timber members that we are replacing will get replaced with steel members, but we aren't replacing them in full. So I wish I had the number in front of me, but it's essentially, we've gone through, we've looked, and we've found what members are actually compromised, and so those are all we're addressing in this project, which is just a percentage of the total, say, pile or pile cap. From the top, the only thing that will really change as far as looks is that rail. The rail will become metal, it will look more like a standard bridge rail versus the old wooden rail.
And how long is this going to be able to last? $5 million, I mean, I can't imagine what it would cost to replace the entire bridge. And I know you're kind of piecemealing 60-some bridges overall together, but how long is this going to give us like longer life out of it?
So there will still be maintenance required on on some of the timber members, but for the federal grant, we we need to get at least 20 years. I know our bridge engineers look at that, and it's it's more complicated than I want to try to explain. Brian Nicholas could walk you through it a lot better than I could.
Okay. So at least 20 years?
At least 20 years. And then after that, we may have more standard maintenance, look at another project like this and and see if there's any new members that have reached that state.
Okay, great. Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Is any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you. Thanks, Ryan.
Okay. Am I entering into a public hearing? Okay, so I'm going to pause our regular board session and enter into a public hearing to consider an increase to the solid waste collection rates charged by franchised haulers within the unincorporated areas of Marion County. Brian May and Entourage. Several of you, I thought you all would come up. Pull up a chair.
Good morning. For the record, Brian May, Public Works, Environmental Services Division Manager, and with the A.
Thank you.
You're good.
Oh, I'm good. Chris Bell, Consultant for the Solid Waste Division. Dennis Mansfield, Deputy Director, Public Works.
And kind of adding, you know, for us, we have representatives from the haulers association of Kevin Hines, the General Manager, and Dan Straney, the Chief Financial Officer.
Thanks for being here.
So before you today, again, we're a little out of practice, and we've kind of discussed this before. Last time we were for the group with a potential rate increase was January of 2019. So from the collection standpoint of our solid waste system, we have not had a rate increase since then. So this is a first in four years. So bringing that to your attention. Chris is going to walk you through a little bit, just kind of summary of what the COSA, the Cost of Service Analysis Process is, and then kind of give a summary of what the ask is this this year.
Great. Do we want to wait for Commissioner Willis?
Nope.
Nope, we're going to lock the doors and move them out.
We we're in, just so we're clear and the public is aware, we did have this briefed to us, so it's not news to the Commissioners, but it is to the public. So he knows what you're going to say.
Right, thank you. All right. As Brian was discussing, we do, or actually, I do, and I work with the the Solid Waste Division, work with Brian and and his group along with the haulers, we do an annual Cost of Service Analysis. And what this requires is an annual submission of a detailed cost report that is submitted by the franchise haulers within the county. Right now, there are currently eight haulers. They submit the report to the county, they consolidate, and they send me the all the details. And what I do is I review each one of those reports. I look at the operations, I look at the costs, we have questions on it, we submit those questions to the haulers and to the haulers' representatives, and we get back and we work on a combined composite report for the two regions within within Marion County. There's the urban area, which is the urban growth boundary area, and then everywhere else. And so the result of that report determines what the cost of providing services within the county, and also allows us to set collection rates for each level of service, whether it's commercial, container, residential, cart, or drop box. The report analysis, what we do is we get those the the reports, and and they're detailed, they're not only include the financial, but operational costs, and it allows us to analyze the operations. So questions will come up, and each one of those questions will be answered by the haulers. We do predictive tests, which are similar to an audit. We look at the reported revenues, we divide that revenue by the reported number of customers to determine that the revenue being generated by those customers is adequate. We look at the costs, whether their disposal, labor costs, a cost of the trucks, cost of administration, to make sure that that is reasonable for the level of operations that are being provided, and review those costs between the county operations and the city operations, whether they're, you know, City Salem or other incorporated cities within Marion County, to make sure that there's not over-allocation of costs or under-allocation of costs either way. And then we take all those adjustments, we roll them up, as I said earlier, into a composite result and determine what the overall financial health is of each one of those areas where the services are being provided by the haulers. As Brian was saying, rates were adjusted in 2019 based on the 2018 submitted reports. And since then, we are aware that we've had some inflation. Right now, we're looking at around 14.8% over that that time. The average price per gallon of diesel has increased by 139%, and the last time I looked, which was last night, we're still around $5 a gallon for diesel. Trucks and containers' costs have increased approximately 5% every year, and this is since 2010. The cost of a garbage truck today is anywhere from $350,000 to $400,000 a truck. When I first got in the garbage business, $80,000 for a truck, so it's significantly. And then labor costs have significantly increased, too, primarily because the scarcity of commercial drivers and who are licensed has increased. So the cost of getting drivers has increased, the cost of finding them has increased. And so in order to keep and maintain those drivers, the price of their labor has increased The report, what I have right here, is the adjusted composite of the expenses. And right now, to provide collection services within Marion County for 2021 was $13.4 million, the expense cost associated with that. And you can see here, a significant amount of that expense is disposal and labor. That's your two primary costs, along with truck fuel and then your administration, your customer service, which is another 17%. So those comprise the total cost to provide services within both urban and the rural areas of the county. Since we have 2021 and we are looking at adjusting rates to 2023, we had to estimate and project those costs based on 2021 for 2022 and into 2023. And we're estimating the costs are going to increase by about 1.1 million compared to where they were in 2021, based on the information in the earlier slide, by labor, be it truck costs, be it fuel costs. And the other piece that has has increased, interestingly enough, is the cost of processing recycling, and right now, we're showing about 3.7%. And that is primarily based on the cost, or I should say, the reduced value of the collected material as the markets are starting to soften. And the way recycling works is the material collected offsets the cost of sorting it out, processing it, bailing it, sending it to market. And so when the market's strong, value of that material offsets the cost of processing, and when it's weak, it it costs a lot more. The haulers were saying earlier today, it's about $120 a ton to process commingled recycling. And if you compare that to the cost of disposing right now at $87.45 a ton, it's significantly higher to process recycling than it is to throw it away. Projected rates results by by region and by service level, as as we spoke to you earlier, the urban region is relatively strong, and that's the the areas within the urban growth boundary. However, the the cart results are a little bit weaker, and the container is a little bit stronger. But overall, the composite's 8.5%. And so what we're proposing in the urban area is a 2.8% increase in the cart costs or the cart rates. And then for the rural region, there's the the container, the commercial container service is significantly lower as well as the drop box. And so we're also recommending an increase for cart service, for container service, and for drop box services within the rural regions of Marion County. And the rural rate for commercial container for manual service, which is primarily, the services provided to customers that are significantly on the outskirts of the county, the distant areas, we're asking for an increase for the smaller containers to bring them up to a cost of service over a two-year period because the increase, especially for the one yard, is significant. So we're asking for a $27 per year rate increase over the next two years for that smaller containers, 20 in the yard and a half and $12. The rates for the containers that are three yards and and higher, we're asking to keep those the same. Drop box increase is going to be across both the rural and the urban areas. And we're asking for an increase or an adjustment to to a degree to the way the rates are set. So we're looking at, you know, standardizing the haul rate for the 20 and the 30, which is the most popular size of drop box. We've asked for a reduction, a slight reduction, for the 40-yard to bring it to comparable comparability with the with the current 20 and 40, 30-yard rates. And then we're asking for some adjustments for the driving distances for the rural areas in the zones for drop box. Medical waste rates are being adjusted slightly. We're eliminating, the way it was adjusted or the way it was presented or set in the past, was the higher first-rate box is going to be eliminated, so they're going to set the rate that is going to not been, or excuse me, it's going to be beneficial to to there's going to be a high high volume and a low volume waste generated for for the medical waste. I'm I've I've looked at the financials, there there's a little bit better mechanism or explanation, and I can have Kevin explain that, the the change in the process and the customers. But it's a slight increase for for the for the low volume and a slight decrease for those who generate high volumes of waste. And with that, if there are any questions, we'd be happy to answer, and if we can't handle them, then we can have the haulers answer those.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, Chris, could you go back to your slide that that showed the first, I think it showed 22 of the last costs? Let's see, where it showed, keep going, keep going, way back. This is way at the beginning, I should have stopped there. I think, yeah, management administrative, 17%, right?
Correct.
And it's going up, it's going up another $200,000. What's the, the next slide shows the increase, I believe. Yeah, 213,000 increase, which is a 9% increase.
Yes.
On admin. What's driving that percentage?
Two things.
And what I'd like to know is what percentage is the 2.4? Because it was 17%. Yeah, go ahead.
Correct. The the two primary costs that are driving that are the the cost of labor. Those are also increasing for, not only for drivers, but also for office staff, and then medical, medical insurance costs are going up significantly. So those are the two primary drivers. Then we have a small CPI and some of the other variable costs associated with that, like, for example, utilities. For that CPI, we've applied a seven, I believe, a 6.8% CPI increase. So those are the those are the costs that are being increased.
And then what's it stay at if you took the the, you had it said, in the previous slide, you had it was 17% of the total, right?
Correct.
So what is it now?
It's 17.2. I just did that calculation for you.
You did?
Yeah.
And what was it before 17? Go back to 17. So it went up two tenths of a percent of the total cost. Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Willis?
I don't have any questions. I have some comments.
Okay.
Is this during time?
I think so.
So.
They might lead to questions.
Yeah, that's fair. So the proposal here is 1.1% increase in the rural areas and 2.8% increase in the urban areas of Marion County. And I just looked inflation over the last 12 months, rolling 12 months with 7.7%. I think it's good, and this is what I want to say on the record, that the increase is less than the inflation rate right now, and I brought this up in the management update, because in the years where costs don't go up that much, but rates increase a little bit, the haulers don't have to give that money back.
Right.
Right? So there's a certain about, a certain equality where in the good years, they don't have to give the money back, but then what that means is when there's years like this and everybody's getting squeezed, they're not going to raise rates as much as maybe everybody else is getting hit with our other utility bills and everything else. And so I just, I want to say thank you to the haulers and to our team for negotiating rate increases that don't add significantly to the pain that a lot of people are feeling, you know? And I saw the City of Salem increase rates over 8%. That just, that hurts, you know, and people are hurting a lot right now. And so I'm grateful that that these are our reasonable rate increases.
I agree. Thank you.
Yeah, I think the big one's the commercial, there are some big changes in the commercial rates, but.
Individual rates.
And I know I pay Salem's. Don't get me started. They have a big franchise fee on top of it, too. What is their franchise fee?
10%.
Huh?
10%.
10% franchise fee, what's ours, 3?
3.
Yeah. So.
7%. The haulers say 7%.
7%? At Salem?
Yeah.
Who's DNO? Anybody from DNO? No.
They're all shaking their heads no for the record. None of them are DNO.
This became real personal for Commissioner Cameron to look back.
DNO's been my my people.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
All right.
Or comments?
I've got just one to add.
Oh, sure.
Staff recommends the proposal as as it's put forward, and also, we did provide a board order and an updated rate sheet if it meets your approval today.
An updated rate sheet?
Well, it'll show the current rates and then what.
Okay, what the proposed ask is.
Yes, exactly.
There's no public comment.
If anybody wants.
Does anybody want to provide comment on the record from the haulers or the public before we move on to the action? Okay. There's officially none, but all shaking their head no for the record. Okay, Commissioner Cameron, it's all you. See if you can get it.
I'll have to check with legal counsel, make sure I do this right. I would need to go back to school.
Do they have a school for this? Because nobody sent me. Just so we're clear, I've been here for two years and.
Yeah, I've been, I've been, never mind.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'll move that we close the public hearing and consider an increase to solid waste collection rates charged by franchise haulers within the unincorporated areas of Marion County.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, the hearing is closed, and the motion passes.
What we got to vote?
Oh, just kidding. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. That's cool, I missed the clue.
You know what I find is interesting?
Now the motion passes.
Yeah, it's where, what I find interesting on this is my neighbors right around the corner are in the county, and DNO's picking up their garbage, right?
Yep.
And they're charging them a different rate.
Yep.
You know what? You can just just ask them to like, how is your trash can free? You know what? You can just, just ask them to like, how is your trash can for you? And you get the steps in to move it back and forth.
But, but I'm wondering in here, I didn't see the, the, I have the smallest thing you can get. They put an insert inside the
20 gallon, 20 gallon, yeah.
So if they took a 35 and they put an insert in it. So it's really small, right?
Yep.
And
That's cute.
I'm, I'm wondering, can the people around the corner that live in the county get, or that, that live in the county? Cause I didn't see a rate for the 20 gallon up there. I just saw 35 gallon.
It's on a rate sheet, yeah. That was just a summation, kind of the common use container.
Okay. It's just not fair.
Well, don't live in the City of Salem. I'm gonna say that. There's lots of places available outside the City of Salem. Wonderful houses.
I lived in the county for 27.
Okay. Thank you for being here and to the haulers for being here and all of your work and partnership and, and to support our curbside customers. It's really important to keep our communities clean and the work that you do really contributes to that. So, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, the other thing, Brian, cause in Detroit, I have on-call service. I don't have a can. And how does that rate get set by, I'm trying to think of that, that's
That would be City of.
Yeah.
That would set that rate. Yep.
Oh, the city.
The city of Detroit sets the rate?
Yep. That'd be their jurisdiction. Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Are we good? Okay. Now, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
It's all about garbage to me.
Yeah. So, and tonight, we were scheduled to have a town hall in the City of Gates at Gates Church, and it's been canceled due to implement weather. We have sent out emails and Facebook notifications, social media, but we wanted to stay on the record today, for anybody watching, we will reschedule that town hall, but we do not want folks to be driving around where there's icy and snowy, just to come talk to us. So if you have something important that you wanted to bring to our attention, you can email us at commissioners@co.marian.or.us or contact our office at 503, I think it's 588-5212 is our main office line. Yes, I got that right. But at any other point in life and time, you could also contact us at those two points of access. Commissioners, is there anything else for the record today?
There is, there is. There was a big soccer game yesterday. The US Men's National Team beat Iran 1-0. We're into the round of 16. Huge, huge news. We're playing Netherlands at 7:00 AM on Saturday. You don't want to miss the game. Go America.
Nine hours, one goal.
The game was nine hours?
No.
No, he's
Three games and they scored one.
There were two goals. There were two goals. And they were very exciting goals.
Well, there's that. Okay. Meeting adjourned.